November 27th, 2023, Collingswood Public Schools Board of Education meeting. This, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It has been appropriately advertised. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mrs. Maya?
Here.
Mrs. Nikolski?
Here.
Mrs. Severino?
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Here.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mr. Dokus?
Here.
And Mrs. Kaden?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had an executive session earlier, but we have, as you can see, exited. And we are moving on to the big event of the night, our sneak peek at the Collingswood Middle School Musical, Newsies Junior. We're, give us a minute to move this way so that we can see you perform. They're going to be over here. And Mr. Hartung and Mr. Gross are here to show us what they've got. Thank you.
Good evening, Collingswood, oh, I'm really loud. Oh, I can project. Good evening, Collingswood Board of Education and community members. My name is Mr. Hartung, and I am the find director of the Collingswood Middle School Musical. Very lucky. We have a large cast of just about 70 students this year involved in the musical. And even more when you count all the students who you won't see tonight, which are those who are putting in time to help backstage or with props or with costumes or with tech. So, Newsies is the real story, all about the 1899 newsboys' strike of Lower Manhattan because Joseph Pulitzer, who owns the New York World, decided to raise the price of newspapers because he wasn't happy with his circulation, and the newsboys would not stand for it. And so this is based on a true story, even though some of the characters are not quite real, and I don't think they were singing and dancing as much as our students will and you'll see. But you know, it's musical theater. We gotta live it up a little bit. So our show is next weekend, December 7th, 8th, and 9th, here at our own Collingswood Middle School Auditorium at 7:00 PM, as well as on Saturday afternoon at 1:00 PM. We're going to perform three selections from our show tonight. The first one is called "The World Will Know," and it's right when the newsies decide to go on strike. So here are our newsies performing "The World Will Know."
I nominate Jack Kelly for president. What do you say? Do we roll away and let Pulitzer pick up pockets, or do we strike?
Strike!
The newsies of Lower Manhattan are now officially on strike. What happens? Yeah, Pulitzer's close to us. They think we're nothing. Are we nothing?
No!
Pulitzer and us, they think they got us. Do they got us?
No!
Even though we ain't got hats or bags, we're gonna do young justice by saying so. And the world will know. Let's stop letting people have their own office. Let them try.
No, we have to be together. We have to stay together.
What is the intention, stop the riots? Are we ready?
Yeah!
What is the intention, stop the gathers? Are we ready?
Yeah!
Who's what's gotta do and tell? Break the will of life if you let go. And the world will know, and the church know too. Mr. Pulitzer, Pulitzer, have we got news for you. See, the world will know, but they're gonna pay. Instead of walking, everyone will be busy then today. And our lights will glow, and we'll keep that business.
Yeah!
And the world will know that we've been here.
No! No!
Twenty-nine hundred voices singing, who can hear aloud, he was all alone. And the world will know that this ain't no game. And we got a son who's running through that perfect day. We can dance to the ball, and we made our choice. And the things we do today will be spot on news. And the light is gone, and the torch is burned, and the Lord will come. So the world will feel the fire and fire. Jack Kelly and the newsies are now on strike. After being many heads on Twitter, it means three thousand dollars is always to this next one. I'm here for children, counting places, a bar, a river, a cheese town, raisins. From a lot of things that were taken for a stroke of a morning, they're not your break. I'm here for you. It's time, I'm here for you. There are others who love the day, and there are others who want you. And they're all here, and I'm here for you. Here's my city, I'm here for you. The Mario Ben and the Aiden Moore's Berlin. I'm here for you, I'm here for you. I'm here for you, I'm here for you. We must come, hell and then we'll go. Hold your church rules. I gotta be either dead or dreaming. So we got faith with my face beating. Tomorrow they may wrap fishes in it, but I was a star for one moment. Look at me, I'm the king of New York. Let it sink, this is gonna be gold, so let it be there. The ones who kill the pride of the sun, I'm a fool, he's not a gun. I'm here to see, no one's gonna hide, I ain't hiding. Red and green, let them take the snap, what's the glory? It's your dream, from a day, story, God's and glory, I'm the king. I'm here. It's just, I didn't think I could realize something I, something in my head was actually possible. This is for kids shining shoes on the street, with no shoes on their feet every day. This is for kids sweating blood in the shops, while the bosses and cops look away. Look at us all standing tall, blaring and rare, it's a brawl. Arrows and guns, who are singing for the life, getting ready to rise to the war. Once and for all, there'll be blood on the wall, and they doubt us. Maybe they're running, the sound, but the sound will shut down without us. There are other kids in the square, there are other kids in the square, there are other fists in the air. So you can learn to play fair, once and for all. Once and for all, once and for all. Once and for all, once and for all. Once and for all, once and for all. There's change coming, once and for all. You're getting too old, too weak, too beholden. A new world is coming for you, and Joey is due. Till once and for all, you're gone. Once and for all, once and for all. Once and for all.
So I feel like I need to apologize because Ms. Goodall does the choreography, which is a huge part of Newsies, and she definitely gets the credit for what we already saw and more to come, as if I couldn't be more excited for this show. I just cannot wait. My favorite one, and they are amazing. So tough act to follow elementary principals, but that's okay. Next up on our agenda are, we're going to have our elementary administrators present, present, excuse me, some highlights of the elementary program, which is going to be amazing, especially if they're going to maybe do a song and dance along with it. We'll see.
Excuse me, keep it down. Formal affair. Middle school, middle school teachers are just middle school kids, all grown up, laughing, making noise. All right. So fun fact, when I was in middle school, I was afraid of my own shadow, so I would walk across the street if there are older people coming, so that was ridiculous, and so many Tatum Tigers. So one more round of applause for those guys, even though they're not here. That was amazing. And the music department as well. All right, so this is our annual presentation on elementary programs. We are proud to present about our elementary schools to you. And before I do any of that, I think it's important to talk about the teachers in the elementary level. Without them, none of this is possible. We can talk about programs all we want, but the people who teach it every day deserve our admiration. So I'd like a round of applause for our amazing elementary staff, please. Thank you. All right, so we all broke up to work and we had a chance to decide which we would talk about, and I jumped at the chance to talk about this because this is my jam and it has been for a long time. The one thing that's really sad is that it took us a global pandemic to make us aware that relationships and social-emotional learning matter in a way that I think is most illustrated on the elementary level. And I think that's a good way for us to think about it. So when we all went to school, grownups rarely asked us how we were feeling or if we knew why we were feeling a certain way, if we were tired, hungry, if we had just been beaten or neglected or were coming from trauma. We just were supposed to learn math and English. That's not the case anymore, especially in elementary school, because we are teaching kids how to feel every day. And we start with the zones of regulation, so if your kids were to come home and talk about feeling in the, insert color, think about the movie Inside Out. That's pretty much what we modeled it after. You see there, if you ask a kid how he's feeling, he says "in the red," that means he's feeling one of those emotions. Now, put yourself in that little six-year-old's brain, he's feeling red. And then again, at 9:01, you say, "Okay, take out your math book." He cannot process any of that. So we are teaching them how to feel a certain way so they can learn their way. So if your kids come home and talk about feeling in one of these, it's important that you know what they mean and you talk to their teacher about why. If a kid comes to school six days in a row in the blue, it's probably time for us to call home and figure out what's going home, what's going on. And in elementary school especially, it's really important that kids feel valued and then can voice that value in a way that makes sense to them because usually adult speak does not make sense to them. So hearing their name by a teacher or a grownup in the school that they care about means a lot and goes a long way. Okay, so why we do it? One is to promote self-awareness so that kids can start to understand where they are in the world, how they fit in the world, especially in the classroom. And then to promote self-management. When kids are feeling a certain way, they often don't know how to get themselves into a different way. That's our job. But in order to do that, we have to help them be self-aware enough to know the need to be managed on their own. Social awareness starts to take shape in elementary schools so that when they get to middle school and high school, they feel much more confident in who they are. So we promote social awareness through SEL, relationship skills as well. You see it every day in elementary school. Kids have playground or centers squabbles. And now, because of SEL, they learn how to work through them on their own and with the help of trusted adults. And the same thing with responsible decision-making, which we would argue has made our discipline referrals go way down because kids are able to manage all of this through SEL. How? So we have check-ins. So again, if your child were to come to school on a certain day and the teacher would check in during morning meeting on the carpet and they were to report how they're feeling, and it's a certain way that might need the help of a teacher or a social worker or a psychologist, that helps us set the table for them on that day. This is Everyday Empathy, one of many programs where storytelling and putting kids into scenarios and asking them how they would handle it helps them figure out their own place in the world, especially in elementary schools. Little forget-me-nots like this from teachers or principals or their friends, reminding them that they are valued every day. Also, teaching kids, especially as they get older, that eventually those little light-up people become big people. And if we can help them now, then they'll be much more functional, healthy, big people. And of course, it does have an actual curriculum, so we're not just making it up as we go along. Oftentimes, that curriculum involves pretty specific read-alouds, which is a really integral part of any elementary school day. And that quickly was my part for SEL. Now Mark Wiltse.
Good evening. Thank you, Brian. When I first started to have a conversation with Faith, I ended up with almost five pages of notes. So to try to get that down to three minutes, you're going to get a very condensed version of everything that she has been doing across the district. But for those of you that don't know Faith Vistis, she has been with us for about five years now. She's in a shared service agreement with Oakland. She has two days rotating in Collingswood, the other three days running the Oakland programs. She recently was in the Collingswood Living Magazine as the educator of the month. And she was also part of the first educational cohort that we ran here to try to encourage teachers to become future leaders in the district. She is known across the district by some of our students as the special book lady. So she has curated lots of books that are now in our buildings. So I thought I would highlight three of them and talk about those books and how they fit in with the curriculum crosswalk work that was finished and completed last year. So the book on my left, your left as well, Don B. Leads the School Parade. That is a story about a Korean student who enters into an American school. Book helps you have conversations about normalizing names that might appear different to American students. Also, a lot of music in the book, so it can be used as a cross-curricular book as well. The book on the right, the ABCs of Black History, goes along with the alphabet. So there's 26 mini-stories that give little black history lessons that we can use in the curriculum. Also, lots of maps in that book. That is one of the books that is currently in the Amistad curriculum. Maps in the book, so it can be used in a social studies class. And then the book in the middle is A Home Again. The English teacher in me loves the fact that it's told from the perspective of the home, so you have some personification in there. But that's a story that could be used to talk about big changes in a child's life. Family might be moving, and it also helps to normalize conversations about diverse families because you have many different families that move into this home. So the curriculum work was state-mandated, so all of those areas were covered. We have books that are housed with the MTSS coaches. Every school has a set of these books. I just gave you three examples, two in the DEI framework and one in the Amistad curriculum, but there are plenty others that we can use. And what's to come for Faith? So there has been some grant money. So she is currently working on an SEL lending library. That lending library will be able to be accessed by families who are struggling. They'll have access to those books that they can borrow and they can use. Also, she has a great relationship with the local library, so she's been coordinating in-person and virtual events. She helps support the PD, our professional development and our PLC work, our professional learning communities. And she's currently or about to start working with the NJ DOE on the information literacy standard. So she's been a great resource for us at the elementary school. We're proud to have her, and we wanted to highlight some of the work that she has done. Thank you for your attention. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hinson, the principal of Sharp Elementary.
Good evening. So I'm going to highlight our Ls, Ebs, Mls. Ms. Grace Marshall is our new elementary L teacher. ELL, or L is very dear and near to my heart, since I taught that for many, many years. Going back to the Ls, Ebs, and Mls. So we're coming from ELL, now we're changing to English learners. And you'll also, we'll see, the term emergent bilinguals and multilingual learners. I think this all celebrates the fact that our students know more than one language, which is something that we should, you know, celebrate and be very, very proud of. So Ms. Marshall, again, is an elementary L teacher. Her students are provided with targeted English instruction every single day. She works out of Sharp and also Garfield. Ms. Marshall, she focuses on the four domains of language acquisition, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And most importantly, Ms. Marshall has already established a very positive relationship with our students and an excellent rapport with the students. I'm able to go in when she's at Sharp many days and, you know, just be a part of her classroom, and the students have really gotten to know her very well. And they are comfortable, they're able to, you know, make mistakes and feel okay and keep trying and try again. So she's done a really fabulous job of cultivating that rapport and that relationship with the students. We also have Dr. Brooke Hoffman coming in from Rowan University. Thanks to Dr. Principato for bringing her in in order to help our teachers to understand the program model that we are following in the district, which is the PSYUP. So right now, this model takes a look at eight different areas of lesson planning and instruction. And right now, the focus that Dr. Brooke is focusing on with the teachers are strategies to help them with students in their classrooms because, as we know, our students, our Ls, they deserve, you know, a very rigorous curriculum. They also benefit from being with their English-dominated peers. And so Dr. Hoffman is just, you know, giving those specific strategies for our teachers to use for the L students in their classrooms and also the students who need the extra language support, who may not be in the program, but they, at home, their dominant language is not English. So that's very important also. So we're thankful that Dr. Hoffman was able to come in, and she will be back. Our teachers provided insightful feedback for her so that going forward, she will know what, you know, she can review and cover with the teachers at the next PD or the next time she does visit our district. I also wanted to take notice of Galilea, who is here today. So Galilea was actually a student of mine. I believe Galilea back in kindergarten. And she is a testament of the L program and our L students. She has worked, she worked hard in kindergarten, and now you're a senior. I know that. I also watched you play basketball, volleyball with Tatum. So I am so happy to see you here, and I am so proud of you for all of your hard work. And I know that you're going to do good things in the future. So it's great to see you there, Galilea. Good job. Keep working hard, okay? All right, you're welcome. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jen Floyd, our preschool supervisor.
All right, so when you think of the preschool program, it's easiest to group our accomplishments into three of our most important parties in the program, the students, the staff, and the families. So as far as accelerating learning this year, we are working on some new program initiatives called the Preschool Basics. This document has been an evolution of feedback from the staff, from the preschool administrators across the district, different trainings, different professional development, and some of our work within the preschool-to-kindergarten transition team with our kindergarten staff as well. Think of, you know, focusing on small group work to accelerate learning, focusing on embedding writing across the school day. So not only are we writing our names in the morning when we come in, but we are having the opportunity to write target shopping lists while we're at dramatic play or making little menus when we're creating a little taco stand during free-choice time. So just really immersing the kids as much as possible. Some of the most fun experiences in preschool are wow experiences because there are those big wows in the school day. Classroom staff, along with family members and community members, so I'm looking at all of you to sign up to do a preschool wow experience, can come in and just give that little extra to the classroom day. So whether or not it is therapy dogs coming in during a pet study for a classroom to learn about, you know, how it's like to take care of an animal, or we had action karate last year, sign up to practice those gross motor skills. These are great experiences. Think about the assemblies from when you were a child, things like that. And also, a very important note is, to save the date, National Penguin Day is actually Saturday, January 20th, which messes up my schedule for my mind, but we will be celebrating our preschool- will be celebrating our preschool mascot pogo, his birthday, on Friday, January 19th. Last year was the first year we did that. And the kids across both districts, Collingswood and Oakland, had a visit from a life-size pogo. They made cards. They sang Happy Birthday. It was a really sweet experience for all of them. All right. As far as supporting our staff, we are implementing reflective cycles with our preschool coaches. So our instructional coach, Ms. Taylor, our intervention and referral specialist, Ms. Dixon, and our community parent involvement specialist and social worker, Ms. McCall, gets to work within the classrooms every day of the week. They work on specific needs for each classroom. They get to know your children very well and really support their colleagues. It's a wonderful relationship they have with the staff. They receive a lot of feedback and they make a lot of the decisions for our program based on what the staff needs. All preschool staff members, teachers, coaches, a few of the admin, instructional assistants, and floater teachers, we all had a de-escalation training on November 8th with Handle With Care just to really make sure we are appropriately, you know, working with your children, making sure we can handle any situation with your kids, you know, in that three to five range, what they need from us at that time. We are also having all the teachers and floaters going through our InterRater Reliability Certification this year. It is a three-year certification program through our Creative Curriculum Platform. And it just makes sure there's consistency across the board as far as what we're observing in the classroom, what we are acknowledging and taking notes and data on, and how we are assessing the kids within the GOLD platform, which is along with our curriculum platform. And last year, we had a lot of positive professional connections with local districts. We had a group of teachers from across both districts in all locations, visit a few partnering districts with us. And we are expanding that to make sure that every preschool staff member has the opportunity to visit a different district, one of the veteran preschool districts, using Creative Curriculum and making those connections. So that's something we're really looking forward to in the spring. And then lastly, engaging our families and communities. If you are a preschool parent, you will know about our Family Involvement Weeks. We have extended them to address a different part of the preschool day almost every month this year to really have parents come in multiple times, really learn about the curriculum, learn about what it's like to be in preschool right alongside their children. We have, once I mentioned already, the preschool coaches. They have their own dojo site, so this is a little plug for them. In addition to your teacher's dojo, you want to sign up for the preschool coaches dojo if you have not done so already and you're a preschool family. The coaches, they add different learning activities, different events from the town. They have, you know, flyers for the local holiday parade that just happened last week. Any tips and tricks on how to raise a three to five-year-old? I have an 18-month-old at home and I'm learning alongside of them every day what I'm looking forward to. And they also include information on their Penguins on Wheels workshops. So all of this information and all of the needs that are shared out are based on our needs assessment for this school year. So at the beginning of the year, the coaches share out a needs assessment for our families and then they gauge all of the information they're sharing with families and what the families needs based on those results. Lastly, they also have an early childhood advisory council that meets quarterly. This is a way that not only engage the families and the staff members, but also engage local community members as well in the preschool program. So every year, they come up with a few goals to really enhance the program. I know last year, one of the goals that were set that was really successful was preschool meetups at Knights Park where every so often the parents would get involved and we would just have, hey, all preschoolers, let's come out to the park and have a visit. So we're looking forward to do that again, just to connect with families. So we really appreciate, you know, everyone who is supporting the preschool program. And if you would like to be part of any of this, I definitely encourage you to reach out because we're always looking for more helping hands. So thank you so much. Mrs. Mr. Smith from Newby.
Well, good evening. Let's see. There we go. All right. So you heard earlier tonight about Tier One interventions to support students through SEL. Another group of interventions would be our Tier Two leveled supports, which come from specifically our department from counseling. So you can see up there, we have our elementary counseling program coordinator, Diane Duque. We met her a little while back, interviewed her and thought she was perfect for the job, and she has been just so. Our social schoolwork, Jessica Perez Hernandez has been outstanding with helping our students and staff also meet the needs of our students. To support both of them, they oversee a group of interns. And those interns are selected by a variety of universities and colleges, interviewed, and then placed into our buildings to support our students and our teachers. They could be doing everything from lessons in the morning during those morning meetings. They could be coming in for specific targeted lessons throughout the course of the day or even meeting with students during the course of recess for lunch bunch groups and supporting them. So those are our hardworking staff members through the counseling department. During the time they're meeting with students, some examples of things that have worked really well specifically in our buildings to support our students are small group work. So looking at our groups that we have up there, those are a few examples that our groups can maintain. One is the Super Squad Group, which specifically works on some sportsmanship and positive connections. The Friendship Group, which works on developing those friendships and improving self-esteem and confidence, not just in those groups, but again, traveling into the classroom. Focus Groups, which helps with those impulse controls and self-control, and that self-awareness, knowing where your body is, what you're thinking at that time. Growth Mindset Group, accepting challenges of those growing opportunities and then persevering when those things get difficult because it's not always easy. How do we work through those things? And our Social Skills Group, developing positive social behaviors. So both verbal and nonverbal. All of those opportunities are there for our students to work through. We collect that information. We reassess where the students are after a number of weeks to see if we're meeting our goals. We reassess, we form new groups, and we move forward supporting our students. That information is also collected for our MTSS process. That collects data as far as are the students in what zones? Where do they spend the bulk of their time? Do they need additional supports? And how can we best help them be our best learners? All that information, like I said, is collected and then presented at our MTSS meetings, which I'll have Mr. Jenna join and talk a little bit more about those meetings and how to use that data.
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Smith mentioned, I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about our MTSS framework that we utilize. It's a system that we utilize to ensure that all of our students are getting proper supports to make sure that they are growing. We're really excited about this process. We've seen a lot of great results from it. And it's really a wonderful example of collaboration amongst colleagues to ensure that our kids are getting the support that they need. In Collingswood, our classroom teachers, learning acceleration specialists, and our MTSS instructional coaches work collaboratively to support student achievement through what's called the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support Framework. And you can see the diagram there. I'll talk a little bit more about that. So this framework ensures that all students' needs are met through increasingly targeted interventions. Mr. Smith gave some examples of some interventions across three levels of support, the three tiers. So the tiers allow for core instruction. That would be Tier One for the whole class. Targeted small group instruction as well as intensive intervention. So teachers, interventionists, coaches work to provide and implement these supports. They also collaborate with administration, the counseling office, child study team, our BCBA. So it's truly a collaboration amongst all of our team members in our buildings. And an important thing to note is that it's not just a framework or system for students who are struggling the most. It's everybody. All students are a part of this process, whether it's through Tier One, Tier Two, or Tier Three. So it's an all-encompassing framework that we utilize. And depending on the student, moving through this process is fluid. Students are provided the interventions that they need with the ultimate goal of phasing them back to Tier One instruction. That's the goal, to provide them that support so that they can get back to being part of Tier One. Another really important point about this is when you look at it from the equity perspective, we've been having important conversations about equity in education for quite some time. I think this, the MTSS process, is pretty much the quintessential example of equity because what we're doing is we're joining forces gathering together to find exactly what individual students need to have success. So it's not equality where every student is getting the same thing. It's truly drilling down to what specifically individual students need to make sure that they are able to achieve success. And as I mentioned, we're really excited about some of the progress that we have seen. There are, as colleagues, we talk a lot about, you know, some of our proudest moments or some of our success stories of our students who have been in this process and the growth that they've achieved. So I just wanted to share briefly three examples of students. Certainly not going to name the students, but these are three students from three different buildings, elementary buildings. If you look at the first student, a new third-grade student last year came to us from another district. The student was reading at a first grade level and performing math at a first grade level as a third grader when she came to us. A little over one year in our district, involved in the MTSS process. She has increased two grade levels in math and 1.5 grade levels in reading, and that's just a little bit over one year. This student, I'll just say that she's at Zin North. She's in the building that I work in. So just looking at the data is one thing, but just the way that this student feels about school, her confidence level, her excitement about being in school, a totally different kid from one year ago. And it's pretty, our staff has done an amazing job supporting her, and she's grown tremendously. Another example, the student, another third-grade student in a different building, experienced a great deal of trauma and tragedy in his life and has been a part of this process. We connected this student with our behavior specialist, our BCBA, who has done great work with a lot of kids. She put together a comprehensive behavior plan for the student. And now the student is interacting with peers more, understanding how to do school after being in multiple schools over the last few years. One other thing, well, I'll talk about the third student first. Once again, another building, different student. MTS has provided a clear data track path for the student to have success. And through the teamwork of teachers, coaches, counselors, the student has received support after experiencing trauma and chaos in his family. And now this student is working above level academically and has responded well to counseling. Three very different students, different backgrounds, different schools, all doing tremendous right now. And one thing that I also wanted to point out that's pretty, I think, special about this, when we invite parents into this process as part of our meetings and explain what we're doing, we've seen parents who are just completely floored by the fact that we have a group of professionals, educators, getting together, putting our heads together to make a specific plan about their child, to make sure that their child is growing. We've had some new students, you know, as I mentioned, come to the district, some from different states. They had nothing like this in their other districts and the other states that they came from. And so they're just kind of wowed by the support that our Collingswood schools are giving to our students. So that's a pretty special thing that I think that we offer. And we're just grateful as a team, grateful to the board, grateful to our district administration for supporting this program and the personnel that we have in place to be able to do this great work with our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much to all of the elementary administrators for that presentation. I think that gave us a really, sorry, I'm seeing spots, a really great overview, detailed overview of some of the really strong initiatives that are happening in our elementary schools to really help meet our kids where they're at and help them move forward. So thank you very much for that. I don't know if anyone, yeah, let's do another. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Let's move into Committee of the Whole. And then if there are any questions, we can roll that into what we were going to talk about. So moving to Section Four, Motion to Enter Committee of the Whole. And a second?
Second.
All in favor. So let's start off with if anyone had any questions in case our fellow administrators would like to not stay for the entire time. Do anyone have anything they wanted to ask or bring up before we move into our other topics? I mean, it was very thorough. So thank you very much for that. Oh, go ahead.
Not a question, but just an acknowledgement. Appreciate you all coming out and giving those updates. I think those have been incredibly helpful for us to understand a little bit of what you all are leading in your buildings. And to hear you all kind of sharing across the district helps us to better understand how you're collaborating on these things so that they're happening in each of the buildings. So that's, I think, from us at the board and speak for myself, I think that's encouraging. So appreciate the updates and coming in and sharing that with us.
Thank you. So for tonight's Committee of the Whole, we actually wanted to use this as an opportunity to give an update on our quarter, our board goals and kind of the process that we use to make sure that we are staying on track with those things. So for those of you that follow our meetings regularly, you'll know that we discussed board goals in August and then officially adopted them at our September meeting. And so as a board, we decided to make sure that we are progressing on those goals. We would ask Dr. McDowell to give us an update roughly about four times a year. It doesn't work out to be exactly officially quarterly because it's a school year. And we started, we wanted to give enough time this time around to have something to update us on. So I'm just going to give a brief overview for everyone listening here in the audience and at home. The board was given this information Thursday before our committee meetings. And then the thinking and the process would be that we would ask any clarifying questions or give any feedback to Dr. McDowell and the administrative team during our committee meetings and then be able to share some of that with all of you. So as a refresher, our first goal is community engagement, which reads, "The Board and Superintendent Team Will Develop and Carry Out New and Different Ways to Meaningfully Engage with the Broader Community Through Listening Sessions, Roundtable Discussions, and Community Events and Celebrations." So the board has instituted roundtable discussions. We've had two already this year that I think have been, I happen to have been at both of them. I think they've been really productive opportunities for the community to hear from us, to ask us questions. They've both been really well attended. We weren't quite sure how that would work out on a Thursday evening. But I did want to give some time for, we've had a group of us that have been there at both of them. And to give any, how do we think it's going? Do we think the format's working? Do we want to tweak anything? You know, we moved from the first one to the second one. We made sure we had some note takers because Roger and I led the first one and realized it was really hard to take notes and lead it at the same time. So we did some adjusting from that end. But just curious, folks that have been at our roundtable discussions on the board, if they have any feedback for us.
I was also at the first two and I found them very helpful to me as a board member and hopefully to the community because we're able to, it's a lot less stilted than this process that we go through every month. So I'm interested to see what the public thinks. But I think the format was working well. I think people had enough time to speak and it was a great dialogue.
I was only at the one, but I thought it went really well. The only thing I would add, just because this was when we had talked about doing them a long while ago, we had talked about possibly inviting members of the community to kind of share sort of what was working well at their schools with us. So we would sort of have an idea of that, which wouldn't be so much of an our topic, but of their topic. So I don't know if we could maybe at some point devote one session to that because I would like, because I think that, I know we did hear at the last session that there's sort of a lack of unity, which I know every school is different. So it's never going to be cookie cutter. But like maybe one school is doing something really, really great or really unique. And maybe if we could hear from different members of different schools, like, hey, we're doing this and this is working really well. If we could hear from different schools, that would just be good feedback for us. And then we could share out. That just might be a nice thing for us to do.
No, I think that would be a great topic for, you know, I think it's helped to have them be topical as opposed to a free-for-all to just come in and talk about whatever. It just helps to focus the time that we have together. And so far, you know, we've done almost like a hot topics sort of thing for the first one and then, you know, let us know. one, and then, you know, let us know how things have been going so far this year. So I think that rolls in very nicely with, with another topic for, for another meeting. We're going to take December off because of, as you can see on the, the future dates, there's, there's quite a few things going on this one month. We thought that might be next month. We thought that might be a lot, but then coming back in January, we know we wanted budget to be certainly one of them, but I think hearing more specifically about how, what's going on in the different schools, and that rolls in very nicely to one of the, the parts about the community engagement goal in general, that, that we also learned at the roundtable discussions is that all of the schools are sending out in maybe different timeframes, a smore newsletter, which was part of the communications plan goal, and everyone at that roundtable seemed very appreciative that they were getting that sort of information from their schools. But we did talk about how it would be nice to have a, maybe once a month, kind of a, here's what's happening in all of the schools, sort of situations that we would understand, or so that the different schools, school communities could know what was going on in, in there, so that, I think that could be something to look for as well. Just moving on here, the, speaking about communications, the, the smore training and making sure that there is a designated communications liaison at each school was, was part of the communications plan that is being implemented. And then as well for community engagement, some focus groups have been happening. Some already took place at the secondary level in October for grades six through 12, and those at the elementary level, grades four through five, and faculty and staff engagement efforts will be happening in December. And one thing that we, we had discussed and wanted to make sure was, was part of the, the focus group plan was to ensure that there, there is a, a close on that feedback loop that we're hearing, well, we are not hearing, the, the administration is hearing from students or from faculty about whatever topic that particular focus group is about, and then will, so that the students or faculty understand how's that information being used for future planning, or whether it's, you know, that was a great idea, but unfortunately it's not one that we can implement at this time, that sort of thing, so that they, they feel that their voices are still, are being heard no matter what the outcome of that focus group is. Moving on to Goal Two, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. The board and superintendent team will continue to center diversity, equity, and inclusion in decisions about policies and practices, such as creating culturally responsive curriculum and instruction practices, creating and implementing robust recruitment and retention plans for diverse staff, investing in and implementing professional development aligned with DEI core values. What, part of what was shared there was, we've already, we've adopted in October the anti-racism policy, that was one of our big goals for policy, and in January we will begin tackling the code of conduct policy, which is a much bigger lift. The board has had two DEI trainings already. The first one was laying the foundation for, for kind of what, what our larger vision was for the district. The second was then setting the vision. We still have one yet to go, but I was going to ask Dr. McDowell if he could talk to us a little bit about, a little more in depth, because you're, you're in the buildings and I'm not, so it'd be more than just reading, the specific professional development that's happening at the middle school and high school, and then what, what the equity councils look like. Could you do that for us?
Sure. And so, one, excuse me, one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we were doing differently this year was differentiating professional development. We are very fortunate to have a wide range of experience and focus from school to school. And so when you've got everywhere from first year to 25-plus year, their professional learning looks very different. An ESL teacher has different needs than a math teacher or a science teacher, and so we've been trying to add an additional layer of choice embedded within our professional development. And so that's thanks to the restructuring of our PD planning for this current year. And so as it relates with the DEI work, and so we started last year and, and we finished Tier Two and Tier Three of our restorative justice work with 20-plus participants at the secondary level, Tier One being an emphasis on community building and Tier Two being a response to harm. And so that work started in April and was completed in November as part of our ongoing commitment around positive school culture, which is also one of the board goals. And so the Equity Council is aligned with our Vision 2026 goals and objectives, really around our commitment to distributive leadership paired and aligned with our DEI work. And so we have recruited 16 faculty and staff at the secondary level to really serve as that first round of equity leaders. And so our goal is to build internal capacity in order to sustain the equity focused work through targeted training, ongoing strategic planning, envisioning, and implementation support. And so the Equity Council participants received access to a targeted web-based learning management system developed by one of our partners out of Rowan University. And so it really emphasizes equity foundations training with available resources, access to trainers, live groups, and then additional group coaching and targeted collaboration. And so this year, the participants on our Equity Councils have already engaged in a series of learning modules and debrief or processing sessions with certified trainers. And so our long-term goal is to continue to build our capacity and then have our equity leaders lead, eventually begin to lead the professional development, the processing, resource allocation, the visioning work across our campuses. And so on November 8th, we had a professional learning day where our Equity Council members participated in their second four-hour session with our consulting groups, and it was really to process the remaining modules. And so as a district-wide focus, we are providing access in both Collingwood and Oakland, access to the learning management system with our objective and our goal is to have the foundational work done by all cert, certified or certificated faculty and staff by mid-February. And so our Equity Council members will be working to turnkey some of the processing serving as equity leaders in, in addition to our consultants. And then staff will, faculty and staff will have the opportunity to either work independently outside of school or work on campus during their targeted professional development days. And so we believe that as a, a strong positive first step based on feedback received from faculty and staff last year was the need for resources, the need for the ability to begin unpacking some of these really challenging concepts and ongoing support. And so we're really excited about continuing to build this level of capacity. And so Phase Two will look a little different, but Phase One is really focused on building capacity, starting at the board, then at the leadership team, then with faculty and staff, and then growing from the school out, opposed to from the top down. And so we're all engaged in a, a learning journey around this equity work, where we treat all of our students with dignity and respect. I hope that answers your question.
I think so. I, I wanted to clarify or, yes, clarify a, a few things. So we have the, the restorative justice training that, says 20-plus participants. So is that also being turnkeyed in, or so shared with other people in the building so that it isn't just those 20 people that are aware of those practices? Is that, that's kind of the thinking behind a small group getting that, that training and then sharing it with others?
So one of the areas of emphasis for all schools is culture and climate on, on their campus, and so every school does it a little bit differently. And so 50% of all Collingwood Public School students are housed at the secondary campus. And so that's where we started in terms of the restorative approaches. We wanted to be able to be in a better place in terms of having internal capacity to lead that work. And so the expectation with this core foundation of leaders on campus, many are, are, are classroom teachers, is when the work begins to manifest at the high school and the middle school level, it's being led by faculty and staff. And so in terms of targeted training, I know that restorative approaches will be embedded in future professional development, but we wanted to close the loop, and we also wanted to give our folks time to actually process what they've learned. And so they were able to complete that second round of work a few weeks ago. And so it, it, it takes some time for these to begin, to, to begin manifesting, but it was, November 8th was where they had the follow-up, the Tier Two and the Tier Three. And so from a school leadership perspective, the high school and middle school administrative teams will be leading what comes next. The difference is, is that they have a much larger team that they can draw from in order to figure out what works for the middle and the high school.
And then just clarifying here, we've got an equity council, we've got equity councils at the middle school and the high school, and then we also have, which are smaller groups, that are people that are kind of getting more in-depth training to be equity leaders, that then go out into their school communities and share what they've learned, train others in, I don't know if train is the right word, but are teaching others what they've learned, correct?
Facilitate discussions.
Okay.
Really kind of be the, the lead learner in the room to help us process and unpack what we've learned together.
But then as a, as a universal basis, every staff member has access and will be expected to complete these modules that you're talking about. What, what is the, what are some of the topics, like what does that look like?
Dr. P., can you give the?
And this is all from the, the partnership with, with Rowan, correct?
Yes.
That's where this is coming from.
Thank you. So there are eight modules, and by February, we're expecting our staff to complete the first four of the eight modules. And we're going to try our best to make sure that all of our staff help our processing this information with our consultant group. Some of the modules talk about microaggressions, microinterventions. They talk about how, you know, what our values are so that we can then begin to understand, you know, our own biases and how to overcome them. They talk about ways of helping to support when we hear microaggressions or maybe off-color types of comments, how to respond to it. And we have several members who are here today, part of the Equity Council, and so that's each module. You know, starts off, where you're listening to a conversation on a certain topic, and then you have to apply what you've learned. And then there's like a little test to make sure that you've read all the research articles that are a part of that module. And so it's pretty well done.
Thank you. Did, so I just did a lot of talking there too, but wanted to check in if anyone wanted to add anything or had any other clarifying comments to make about Goal Two before we move on.
I would like to, Dr. McDowell, if you could talk a little bit, it's, it's really good to... Hello? Turn it off, I'm just talking. I'll try to talk a lot. Hearing how teachers are doing this work and staff are doing this work is great. I'm wondering how you're thinking about using the restorative lens in particular on some of the larger systems that are at work, for example, in our district? Like we were given the HIV report for this, this last round, and it seems to be a lot of punitive discipline being needed out. And so just thinking about where you're seeing opportunities to take these concepts that are being given to educators right now and building them into some of the systems that are at work in the district.
It's a great, great question. And so when we initially talked about action items related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, it was broken down into three core areas of emphasis: policy, practices, and people. And so what I would say is that we, we, we live and die by policy. And so the code of conduct is making the code of conduct restorative focused is going to be a huge first step in the right direction. And so currently, our schools are operating based on the existing policy, and the policy, they, they adhere to it, to the letter. And so the policy may, may or may not have worked or have been successful in years past. It no longer meets our needs based on what we're seeing in our schools, and it's no longer aligned with the values that we say that we want to continue to invest in, which is opportunities for reconciliation, opportunities for students to learn and to grow, and, and to move away from zero tolerance and to move away from punitive practices. And so what I would say is, is that the anti-racism policy that was approved in October is a strong first step. That serves as the foundation for discussion, but really the bread and butter where we'll start to see real meaningful change is when we do a dramatic revamp of the code of conduct, where there are more options available to students and available to staff that helps us to be able to deliver on that promise around a restorative approach. Right now, it is very punitive, and so there are not options that allow administrators or staff to deviate. And so the educators that are in the buildings, that are in the room, need to have the opportunity to be able to look at students individually and try to figure out what is the most appropriate option for the students that helps them continue to grow and shifts in that direction.
And then finally, Goal Three, Culture and Climate in Schools. The board and superintendent team will continue to seek out and implement plans to improve the culture and climate for all students, faculty, and staff by supporting building leadership and efforts and events to foster positive school culture, investing in and implementing restorative justice practices at all grade levels, and monitoring the impact of the school liaison officer on climate and safety. On that last one, the, the board has gotten a, a report on the SLO's activity last month and this month. We've decided we're not, for, in the interest of privacy, we're, we're not going to, we're going to release the report to, at the, the public agenda board level quarterly so that you can't, for privacy concerns. But the good news is that that is an issue because the, the need for the SLO to interact with, in person with students has been very minimal. We've had a lot of improvement in general in culture and climate at the high school, and so we are also working right now, or the district is working on ensuring that the SLO position is being utilized as, as well as it can for support at the administrative level, so that they, they feel that they are getting what they need from that position. As far as other ways that culture and climate is being improved in schools, each school has a leadership team that consists of the principal or principals, supervisors, teacher leaders, and staff, and they meet monthly to go over their continuous improvement guides for their particular schools, because the needs of an elementary school obviously are going to be very different than a middle and a high school, and each of our elementary schools' needs are even very different. But they do all have some overarching themes that they look at and, and then break that down into how student needs are being met, from, you know, how we're using benchmark data to, to inform whether students are succeeding and expectations are being met, looking at monitoring attendance, behavior, is there, you know, back to the restorative practices that was just talked about, as well as student involvement in schools. How, how engaged are they in the classroom? How engaged are they in extracurricular activities, that sort of thing? So that is all that we had discussed for our quarterly update on our goals, and we just wanted to make sure that we shared that information with the, the community as well. And we will continue talking about this in our committee meetings with Dr. McDowell and Ms. Coleman, and asking for, for more updates as things go along. With that, and just kind of keeping an eye on the time, can we have a motion to exit Committee of the Whole?
I move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Moving on to Section Five, Future Dates and Miscellaneous Information. Take a look at, well, obviously, we've got the newsies, December 7th. Section six, routine business, motion to approve the minutes of the October twenty-third, twenty-two-three regular board meeting. And second?
Second.
Is that just an all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we are at section seven, our first opportunity for public comment. Uh, the purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. So if you have more general comments, uh, to make that are not something that's specific to this agenda, please wait till later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate, clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section. For more detailed response to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by appropriate staff members or administrators or be discussed by, uh, the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment. Please remember to state your name and address for the record and, uh, we will give you the, the signal when you're getting close to their three-minute time.
Good evening. Beth Ann Rogers, five-eight-four Washington Terrace Audubon. I'm one of the CEA vice presidents and each month the CEA shares some good news of what's happening in our school community. A highlight from the past month, the Collingswood Education Association honored our veterans at the American Legion Tatum Shield Post with a reception on November eleventh. The amazing CHS orchestra performed and we also had several wonderful performances from the middle school cast of Newsies. It was a great day and we look forward to planning the next Veterans Day events. In other news, in the October's State of Our Union, the CEA asked questions of the board, questions regarding the effects of the current year's budget cuts on the educational experience of our students. While we eagerly anticipate the results of the board's analysis, the school year is moving forward and another budgeting period is upon us. So in addition to the questions we asked last month, we are asking you to share with the CEA and the parents of the Collingswood students, your budgeting priorities, not only with the current year's budget, but also with the additional funding received from the state. You see, we are slightly concerned about transparency and credibility regarding the budgeting process. How can the board hire an assistant BA at the cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars when the outgoing accountant earned eighty thousand dollars? We seem to have a selective budget crunch. It makes it difficult to trust the process when the board contradicts itself. It seems like we are playing a shell game with the money. The CEA asks for transparency regarding the budget and clarification of the budgeting priorities. Thank you.
Wayne Rossi, one-fourteen East Palmer Ave. Um, I thought it was really good to hear about all the diversity, uh, and restorative justice, um, work that's being done. Um, it's really encouraging and I just wanted to share a few thoughts related to that. Uh, the first was, um, I, I really do agree that that code of conduct, um, and I also think making sure that the, the use that, uh, uh, had been mentioned of the school liaison officer, making sure that that's all correctly aligned with the restorative approach is important. Um, one of the items that I know has come up in the past that I didn't hear any update on was, um, getting more diversity in the teaching staff, you know, like I, I go to the middle school, I see, you know, all of the, the very qualified, but very white people who are teaching, you know, my daughter and I, I know that children really thrive when they have teachers who share their identities. So I think that that's a really important point, uh, to make. And the other thing, um, I, I just wanted to bring up was I, I saw a little bit in the, um, in, in the elementary principal, uh, point, the way that crosswalks were being integrated and I'd like to hear more about how the crosswalks are being integrated into, uh, the classroom teaching, how they're actually going over as a practice because I, I think that there's a lot of really important curriculum there and seeing how that's being done and seeing how it's strengthening the diversity of education is really important. Um, so those, those are the points I wanted to make sure get, get talked about with this, uh, with that diversity point. Thank you guys.
Okay, moving on, we are actually going to flip and instead of doing the superintendent's report next, we're going to do the student board, um, report next and then move on to the superintendent's one, so.
All right. Um, CHS has finished its homecoming events with the student council's old Hollywood-themed dance drawing and playing ticket sales. Um, our pep rally was a great success with a whole homecoming court dressed to the nines.
Um, we also have a several of our high school, um, talented vocal students auditioned for and were accepted into the All South Jersey, um, choir this month and we're, we all congratulate all of their successes.
The winter sports, the winter sports season has started and we encourage people to show support to our winter athletes by attending their matches, except for the bowlers because nobody cares about us.
Oh.
Uh, the social justice club helped our students on the high school campus celebrate the week of transgender visibility, uh, by highlighting, uh, the successes of, uh, transgender historical figures and, uh, proudly flying a transgender pride flag, uh, in our hallways. Uh, we encourage members of the student body to approach us in person or via email with anything at all they'd like to bring to the board's attention.
Thank you. And now Trey, I think we're all going to need the bowling, uh, schedules so that we can all be there with pom poms to cheer you on. Uh, so, so that was a good plug on your part. That's very clever. Um, and thank you to all three of you for the report. Uh, as always, you are more than welcome to stay, but we also fully understand, uh, if you need to, uh, step out and, uh, get to, uh, other activities and work that you most likely have to do. So thank you. Um, now moving back to section eight, which is the superintendent's report.
So good evening again. Um, section eight point zero one is the, uh, enrollment report, which is attached. Uh, October of twenty-twenty-two, uh, two thousand two hundred and ninety-one students. As of October twenty-twenty-three, twenty-two fifty-six, eight point zero-two, zero-three and zero-four are the school safety drill reports, suspension report and anti-bullying report. Uh, and then just a few, uh, topics, um, that we wanted to share, aligned with the board goals, but also aligned, uh, with some of the things that we're seeing in our schools. And so as part of our continued focus on positive culture in schools, uh, we issued a gratitude challenge, uh, for, uh, all schools, November seventh through the twenty-second, leading up to the Thanksgiving break. And so we ask schools to identify creative ways to incorporate more gratitude. And so why, do you ask? And so negativity bias is our tendency to register negative information more readily and dwell on such events. This bias towards the negative leads us all to pay more attention to bad things that happen, making them seem much more important than what they are. And as it dominates our thoughts, it then increases levels of discontent, which makes us miss out on all of the things that are going well around us. And so, uh, research has shown that there's a wide array of psychological events that folks tend to focus on and there's a, a tendency to shift towards the negative. And so one of the things that we wanted to, to place greater emphasis on, especially given the amount of information that our students are being exposed to, whether it be on television, in the news, in their social media feed, was focusing on maintaining a positive outlook. And so gratitude is a very powerful tool for our educators, both for personal and classroom application. It can help establish healthy classroom culture as it increases feelings of optimism and joy. It can help to decrease anxiety and depression and can help students to feel more connected to their communities. And so our school leaders next week will be sharing, um, all of the creative ways, um, and then we will curate that and then share that publicly, the ways in which they celebrated, um, and, and, and presented gratitude in each of their schools. And, uh, we are more than likely going to continue with that, uh, to carry us through the remainder of twenty-twenty-three, um, as we approach, uh, this new, uh, winter season. And so as mentioned earlier, we also, uh, as part of our continuing efforts to elevate student voice, uh, we met with very diverse groups of students, uh, across grades, uh, six through twelve on October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh and received a lot of positive feedback. We also received areas of improvement, um, that has been shared with both middle and high school administration. And so questions included, but weren't, weren't limited to, uh, what do you like about school? What do you not like about school? If you could change one thing or one specific thing about your experience, what would it be? Can you identify a program or a class, um, that either exists or, uh, could exist that you would find valuable or have an interest in? How would you describe your school culture this year compared to last year and can you be specific? And then how do we improve our college and career readiness efforts, uh, for you? And so, uh, upcoming in December, uh, we will, uh, have, uh, age-appropriate focus groups with grades four and five. Uh, and then we will also have informal, uh, meet and greet and focus groups with faculty and staff across all buildings, um, in both Collingswood and in Oakland. On November twenty-first, we celebrated thirty-seven new inductees to the Collingswood High School National Honor Society. Uh, let's give them a round of applause. Our students were, were, uh, inducted and selected based on their demonstrated scholarship, service, leadership and character. And we'd like to publicly acknowledge, uh, Ms. McDevitt and all of the recommending teachers and coordinators, um, of this very important event. And so, uh, also across our districts, we are extremely fortunate to have, um, a large number of faculty and staff who daily, um, exhibit leadership qualities and have either enrolled in or considering enrollment in a formal school leadership program. And so throughout the years, our staff have enrolled in a number of local programs, limited or not limited to Rutgers, Rowan, New Jersey Excel. Uh, and so staff who are eager to begin their, uh, a, a career in school leadership must take part in practicum or leadership projects with supervisors and principals and central administration. However, um, sometimes these opportunities are, are sparingly. And so one of the things that we have done is, is last year we established an educational leadership academy, acknowledging that, um, leader is a description, leader is not a, um, title. And so there are classroom leaders, there are teacher leaders, there are student leaders. And so when we talk about the term leader, you don't always have to be an administrator in order to demonstrate leadership on your campus and throughout the district. And we wanted to create meaningful opportunities for our faculty and staff to be able to demonstrate leadership without always having to leave the classroom in order to do so. And so we seek to establish new opportunities by providing our leaders with daily practical roles that allow them to provide mentorship to novice teachers, um, take on special projects in their building or around the district, uh, participate in budgetary development decisions, support restorative approaches and SEL initiatives, collaborate with, with, uh, community members about district initiatives, um, and then help with comprehensive school improvement in their buildings. And so the staff members that are participating in these programs are offered opportunities such as direct supervision from administrators and instructional leaders aligned with their specific goals around growth and development. Um, they meet once a month and a target professional development for the day, um, to engage in ongoing collaboration with other, um, leaders around the district, with professional growth, looking at data analysis, book studies, and then other topics as determined by each cohort. And they will also be working to submit a proposal around an identified problem of practice or a special action-based project that they would like to work on, um, that the district will work to fund, um, in their own district, so without having to leave. Uh, and then any other topic that they find relevant. And so last year we had thirteen participants in cohort one and they now represent leadership roles in our district such as principal, program coordinator, equity council member and instructional coach. The twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four kickoff for cohort two is this week and we have thirteen new participants who will also engage in a season of personal growth and leadership development. And we will be connecting, um, later, uh, this school year with cohort one and cohort two for more action-based research and then collective reflection. Um, it was referenced earlier around budget development and so, the business offices provided, uh, to all schools and departments, uh, school year twenty-four, twenty-five budget information. However, um, things like actual revenue, um, projected enrollment, those numbers will not be available until January and those come from the state of New Jersey. And so right now we are putting in place, um, ideas, concepts and principles that we will then use once we have hard numbers. Um, we've also sent out additional guidance to all schools regarding the need for what is known as strategic scheduling. This is how do we more effectively utilize the time that we have to maximize classroom instruction while also providing our educators the time that they need in order to coordinate with, with each other, look at student data, plan effectively and what makes the most sense. And so we'll be working closely with schools in order to develop student-centered learning days while also honoring feedback received from our parents and our caregivers. And so some of our budget priorities include reorganization of our district leadership team. We need to better align our roles, responsibilities and opportunities to our strategic goals, objectives and school-based support. We also need to focus on building leadership capacity through professional development. And so a lot of the time we focus on, uh, supporting the needs of our students, we focus on supporting needs of our teachers. Um, an area of, of growth for the district is we have to make that same level of investment in professional development for our building leaders as well, and so we'll be putting a better foot forward for that. Curriculum and instruction, um, we will be focused on a comprehensive curriculum review with an emphasis on rigor, relevance and, uh, being culturally responsive. Um, we heard one of our community members really talk about the crosswalks. We have a golden opportunity, um, to get it right, um, but it takes, uh, a considerable amount of time and it's a, uh, it's a longer process in order to make sure that we have a curriculum that is representative of the students and the communities that we serve. Uh, we're also going to be looking at more clearly defined college and career pathways. And so the data that we collected during our strategic planning process indicated that a majority of our community, um, really want us to, uh, aggressively create more meaningful opportunities for post-secondary planning for all students with an emphasis on, um, counseling, an emphasis on options that connect students with real-world employment, um, and, and those core components. And so, and then also taking a look at programmatic expansion and then adjustments based on student need and preference. And so I want to pause for just a moment because, um, we continue to, uh, sometimes speak in generalities without giving very concrete examples. And so I want to make sure that I'm being as clear as possible. And so from a district perspective, the district does not shut down programs. And so let me say that again. The district does not shut down programs. We survey students and students select programs of interest and we make, uh, informed decisions based on what students either have or have not selected that they want to participate in. So for example, if we have always offered basket weaving for the last thirty-five years and we survey our students and no one selects basket weaving, we don't offer basket weaving that semester. We offer what students have asked for. And so we will continue to elevate student voice because if they are not, um, involved in the development of future programming, they're going to disengage. And so our, um, counseling team, they're currently organizing the course selection survey, uh, because we want to make sure that both at the middle and the high school level, we are developing and refining and, and expanding on programs that students want to participate in. And so we'll continue to, to be able to do that and use that data to inform future planning. And so in areas where we have more student demand than actual capacity, those are areas that we invest in. Where there are areas where we have more, um, resources but fewer levels of demand, we then scale back and we shift those resources and allocate them based on where students have asked for us to invest in. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying in, in that aspect. Um, new also for this year is we, uh, will have an, an expectation, elementary, middle and high, new master schedules with an emphasis on common planning time and professional, uh, learning time for staff during the school day. And so, our counseling team, they're currently organizing the course selection survey because we want to make sure that both at the middle and the high school level, we are developing and refining and, and expanding on programs that students want to participate in. And so, we'll continue to, to be able to do that and use that data to inform future planning. And so, in areas where we have more student demand than actual capacity, those are areas that we invest in. Where there are areas where we have more resources but fewer levels of demand, we then scale back and we shift those resources and allocate them based on where students have asked for us to invest in. So, I just wanted to make sure that we were clarifying in, in that aspect. New also for this year is we will have an, an expectation, elementary, middle, and high new master schedules, with an emphasis on common planning time and professional learning time for staff during the school day, and the elimination of all non-contractual early dismissals. And so, we've heard loud and clear from our families, specifically our families of our youngest learners, that they acknowledge and they agree that professional learning communities is important and that teachers need protected time. Where there is a, a challenge is how do you effectively get teachers and staff members the time that they need to be able to meaningfully look at data, collaborate with their colleagues, and plan out rigorous personalized instruction, and balance that with the real-world needs that some of our families have, which is the scarcity of childcare options. And so, in order for us to be able to balance both worlds, we are asking for our schools to adjust the way in which we utilize time to be able to do both. And so, we'll, all schools will be submitting a skeleton in December of what a possible schedule could look like, and then we will refine that from January to March, leading up to the development of the budget. And then, we will continue to, to make sure that we are prioritizing those two major areas, bless you, above and beyond meeting the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of all students. And then, the, the last core area of our budget development priority is preschool expansion. And so, in Collingswood, we have a high-quality preschool, and the challenge that we are faced with is how do we make sure that every family in Collingswood that has a desire to participate in our program has a seat? And so, we'll continue to look for ways to expand options until we get to what's called universal preschool levels, because we believe that if we can get a hundred percent of families participating in a rigorous, high-quality, early learning experience, it sets them on a positive trajectory for the next thirteen years. We're also pleased to announce that Collingswood Public Schools received a high-impact tutoring grant to the tune of fifty-eight thousand dollars. And so, the purpose of this is to enable our, our schools to work with service providers in order to provide tutoring services at scale for specific groups. And so, Collingswood will be using this award to provide high-impact tutoring intervention to accelerate student learning in second, third, and fourth grade at specific campuses. And so, we'd like to thank Mr. Windsor Yamamoto, Principal Henson, Ms. Katz, Ms. McErlin, and Dr. Principato for collaborating on this special project. And so... And so, in the month of October, we presented our, our district test reports. And so, I just want to make sure that when we're having conversations around data, we're putting them in the appropriate perspective. And so, assessments are snapshots in time. They tell a story, but they don't tell the only story. And so, one of the things that we're looking at is multiple points of data throughout the course of the year to help better inform what the instructional environment should look like for our students. And so, what the data is telling us is that, based on our initial review, is that we are making progress across multiple grade levels, across multiple subject areas, and that is thanks to the fact that our teachers are working incredibly hard within challenging circumstances. And so, when we began this work around learning acceleration, we talked about our academic recovery was a three-to-five-year endeavor. We're now in year three. And so, in multiple areas, we are actually trending above pre-pandemic levels. And so, the loss of learning or the loss of, of academic proficiency that we experienced during the pandemic across multiple grade levels and multiple content areas, we are trending and are above those, and that is large, and, and thanks to the collective efforts of our instructional model and our teachers that are really working extremely hard in challenging circumstances. Add the complexity of the social-emotional learning piece, and this is hence one of the reasons why staff need time to plan and think through all of these core challenges in order to give their absolute best to our students. And so, when we think about professional learning communities, professional learning communities in their most basic form is when educators get the opportunity to come together and ask a few simple questions. Where are we going? Where are we now? How do we move learning forward? What have we learned? And who are we, who are we reaching? And it's constantly asking that same question, and it's leveraging the expertise of the educators that are in the room to be able to make meaningful day-to-day decisions in the best interest of our students. And so, we will continue to, to invest in, in, in those pieces. And so, finally, I just wanted to acknowledge the ongoing and the collective efforts of all of our students, given some of the things that they're experiencing. And so, I'll, I'll circle back to that, just that concept of gratitude. And so, we are extremely fortunate in Collingswood to have, and you heard that from our elementary leaders, as well as our secondary, the resources that we have will never be enough based on the demand from our students. And so, the commitment and the responsibility of the Board of Education and the District Leadership Team is to leverage the resources to the best degree possible to meet the needs of every single student. And so, that requires us to make hard and critical decisions. And so, and this year is no different. And so, once we have more information, we will be coming back to the community, we'll be going back to the schools in authentic partnership, and putting, and making decisions that are in the best needs to continue growing in the areas where we're seeing improvements, but then also to begin allocating resources to the places where we need to grow. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. McDowell. Moving on to section...
Could I... Go ahead, Mary.
I, I just wanted to... Are we allowed to? No, we're not allowed to?
No.
But if there, maybe if there's another time. Sorry. I'm just following the rules. Section ten, the Business Administrator Board Secretary Report, Ms. Coleman.
All right. Item ten point zero one is a listing of your October monthly budget transfers. Item ten point zero two are your October financial statements. Ten point zero three is your student activity cash report. Ten point zero four is your food service financial report for the month of September. Ten point zero five is a listing of the purchase orders that have been issued on your behalf. And then, ten point zero sis... six, excuse me, is a listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning, pending approval tonight. And as of yet, I have not heard back from the state regarding our request for stabilization aid. They asked some clarifying questions that we answered, but I have not heard back. I'm hoping maybe December, beginning of January. But okay, as soon as I hear something, I'll obviously spread the word. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Moving on to section eleven, Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee. Mr. Craig will present.
The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. Committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. Tonight, we are requesting approval for the following items. Eleven-two to eleven-nine is the Board Secretary's report, as was just presented. Eleven-ten is the comprehensive maintenance plan, which is required in November of each year and to be sent to the county office. Eleven-eleven is the, a, rejoining the Joint Investment Insurance Fund, and that, the Jifpo for three years. Eleven-twelve is renewing our lease with Oaklin for a pre-K space at a two percent increase from what we were paying in the previous year, or in a previous agreement, and this is for five years. Eleven-thirteen, RFP for engineers, Wilmington and Benrick were selected, and this is a DOA requirement for any future work on buildings. Eleven-fourteen, BCS, BCS rates for additional student services as needed. Eleven, the next couple are tutoring buckets. Eleven-fifteen, eleven-sixteen are in reference to the high-impact tutoring grant that was in the superintendent's report. That, that's eleven-sixteen, is approving that fifty-eight thousand. The RFP is for a provider for that specific, to provide that specific high-impact tutoring. Eleven seventeen to eleven-nineteen is referring to tutoring that will be handled, I believe, here within district, spending down excess ESER funds that will be running out September of twenty-twenty-four. So, spending those down to pay for more, for more direct tutoring in our elementary, middle, and high school campuses. Eleven-twenty is getting our Clementon Shared Services Contract in order. Eleven-twenty-one is approving year two of five of the School-Based Mental Health Continuation Grant. That's another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Eleven-twenty-two to eleven-twenty-five are use of facility requests for rec basketball, rec wrestling, a wrestling camp, and a basketball camp. So, we are seeking approval for items eleven-two to eleven-twenty-five.
Thank you. Motion to approve said items?
Sub moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Dokus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Moving on to section twelve, the Curriculum Committee. Mr. Chu will present.
The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. Up for approval today are field trips for elementary, middle school, and high school. So, that's twelve-point-oh-two, twelve-point-oh-three, and twelve-point-oh-four. Elementary's going to go see Newsies, I believe... Oh, no, sorry. This is the, um... Oh, this is performance, sorry. This, the elementary is going to, had an avenue to do seeing during the holidays. I got that confused. Okay. And then, the middle school, we're going, they're going to, Kindness Club is going to Dickens Village to contractualize Charles Dickens' Christmas Carol. And then, the high school, it's a Magicals Fest, so Magical Fest at the Skosh, right? Let's see. So, then, twelve-point-oh-five is our district home instruction. Twelve-point-oh-six is Senior Village for a twelfth-grade student. Twelve-point-oh-seven is our preschool plan for next year, which, which includes that piece that Dr. McDowell talked about in terms of, you know, our, our preschool expansion, trying to add more classrooms to meet student needs. And so, we're seeking approval of twelve-point-oh-two through twelve-point-oh-seven.
Thank you. Approval, or motion to approve said items?
Sub moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
I, I do have a question, of course. I, I know we had talked about the calendar, the school calendar. Is that a item that was supposed to be added or not? Oh, gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where abstain.
Mr. Dokus?
Yes, except where required to abstain.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Section thirteen, the Personnel Committee. Ms. Sheridan, Celia will present. The Personnel Committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment, and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Today, we're seeking approval of items thirteen-point-oh-two through thirteen-point-thirty-five. Thirteen-point-oh-two is a dismissal. Thirteen-point-oh-three and thirteen-point-oh-four are resignations. Thirteen-point-oh-five is back on the agenda. It's the revised retirement date for our district accountant, Ms. Baiki, who was originally going to leave us on Friday, but she's agreed to stay for another month. And we'll talk about that in one more second. Thirteen-point-six is a revised NJFLA. But thirteen-point-oh-seven is the appointment of Stephen Burns as an Assistant Business Administrator, as was brought up by Ms. Rogers in her report. This is being done, I think, as responsible succession planning. Ms. Baiki was our accountant, but Mr. Burns is being hired at a higher rate because he has a business, a board, a BA certification, and he'll be working with Ms. Coleman, and I hate to even say this, but eventually, perhaps, when she's no longer with us for retirement purposes, it, it's responsible succession planning. So, we're seeking the approval of Mr. Burns at article thirteen-point-oh-seven. Thirteen-point-oh-eight is the appointment of a school psychologist. Thirteen-point-oh-nine, high school's business teacher. At thirteen-point-ten is the appointment of a social worker. Thirteen-point-eleven is the appointment of a maintenance, buildings, and grounds employee. Thirteen-point-twelve is a long-term substitute and replacement teacher, another one at thirteen-point-thirteen. Article thirteen-point-fourteen is an appointment of a new nurse at Garfield. Thirteen-point-fifteen, an elementary school nurse, long-term substitute. Thirteen-point-sixteen, the appointment of a middle school phys ed teacher, long-term substitute, and another one at thirteen-point-seventeen. Thirteen-point-eighteen, I'm happy to announce that Ms. Vesper is now Dr. Vesper, so she has been given a revised contract. Thirteen-point-nine, congratulations to her. Thirteen-point-nineteen, Mark Newby's enrichment clubs. Thirteen-point-twenty is the appointment of fall and winter athletic event personnel. Thirteen-point-twenty-one, high school winter athletic EDP, extra-duty pay stipends. Thirteen-point-twenty-two is EDP statements, stipends for the middle school. And thirteen-point-twenty-three, high school non-athletic stipends. And thirteen-point-twenty-four, non-athletic EDP, mental health stipend. Thirteen-point-twenty-five is mental health clinical supervision. Thirteen-point-twenty-six and thirteen-point through thirteen-point-twenty-eight are the high, intent, I'm sorry, high-intensity tutor approvals. Thirteen-point-twenty-nine, the mental health professional development opportunities. Thirteen-point-thirty, there is also mental health professional development opportunities but for administrators. Thirteen-point-thirty-one, the approval for staff to attend Rutgers Leadership Academy. Thirteen-point-thirty-two, NJCIE training. Thirteen-point-thirty-three is the appointment of various substitutes and tutors. There's a brief travel expense form at thirteen-point-thirty-five. And as I said before, we're seeking approval of items thirteen-point-zero-three through thirteen-point-thirty-five this evening.
You missed thirty-four, Buildings and Grounds substitute custodians.
I did. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, thirteen, I ran the bottom there. Buildings and Grounds substitute custodians, there are four of them.
Thank you, Ms. Sheridan, Celia. A motion to approve said items?
Sub moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, comment, please. And I, I have not talked to Mrs. Rogers about this, but it won't sound that way. On thirteen-oh-seven, I absolutely believe that we need to replace the accountant that's retiring. I, I think that's an absolute, has to be done, but I don't think it has to be with a Assistant Business Administrator. That's much heavier than that, that job needs. It's also, while I understand it is in the budget, the fact that it's in the budget doesn't mean that we have to spend the money. The, the staff gets their, their budget shut down December, January of every year for anything they haven't spent. So, again, that's, that's their, we don't have any, any surplus at this point in time or a negligible surplus, and this would be one way of getting a little bit of it back. And the, the individual proposed has had four drops in five years.
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there because we've discussed this at our committee meetings, and we can't talk about personnel in a public session. That's not appropriate. So, thank you for your comment. We've discussed this at length in our Finance, Buildings, and Grounds, but we're going to move on from, from that. Anything else?
Yes, I have a couple of comments. So, I may be a little bit lengthy, and I apologize, but before we vote on this section tonight...
Just please remember to keep the personnel part out of it.
I, I won't do any of that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to understand and help the public understand some of the top-level positions that we need in order for the district to run efficiently or effectively in an ideal world. So, obviously, one, we need a superintendent. Two, we've been told we need an assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, which we currently do not have. Three, we need a business administrator who is also an assistant superintendent. Thank you, Beth Ann, for being so lovely. Four, we've been told that we need an assistant business administrator that we've never had before but is on the agenda for hire tonight.
We, we have had one before. Correction.
Five, okay. Five, we've been told that we need an administrative assistant to the tech department, which we currently do not have, but we did vote to approve that job description last month. So, additionally, one of the questions I have is how many people would we need to have the tech department run smoothly? I know, I think we currently have four, we said earlier. Five, okay. So, when we're looking at the upcoming budget season, some of the concerns that I have are making sure that the buildings we have are being maintained at the level they need to be, and that we're, are we looking at possible cuts to programs and staff that will impact our students? I know we recently had our accountant resign, but it's on the agenda tonight that she extended her resignation, but I know that's going to be a huge strain on you, Beth Ann. I'm wondering if it's possible for us to come up with creative solutions that might help with the added workload, like, is it possible, and may or may not be, for us to give existing staff stipends to help out while we reevaluate our financial situation? Is it possible to go back to the drawing board to hire an accountant instead of an assistant business administrator? Because I want to be clear that this is not an administrative assistant that we're hiring. This person has all the qualifications to be basically a second full-time business administrator. to be basically a second full-time business administrator in the district. So I understand that we hire teachers, the argument that we hire teachers and needed staff all the time. And therefore, we shouldn't say no to what we need in the business office. It's just that these days, we are underwater in terms of our finances and not insignificantly, as we are all very well aware. So we need to be mindful of every move we make and how that impacts our students.
I'd like to clarify that the secretary would not be in administrative position. So I think that's an important thing for the public to be aware of, that you mentioned in your list of needed positions for administration, that a tech secretary would not be one of those. I also just want to say to the board members in general that while I understand, you know, everyone is allowed to say their piece to a certain extent, as long as we're not violating anyone's privacy. This has been discussed extensively in not just our Finance, Buildings and Grounds Committee, but also in all of our committees to ensure that everyone understood what we were talking about and why this was needed. And if we are going to praise our Business Administrator for being the wonderful shepherd of our school district and budget that she is, I think it's important to say this recommendation is coming from her. She is asking for additional assistance in the same way that any department who has the amount of workload that the business office has, especially in a time of a budget crisis, would need in addition to the fact that she is operating under budgets for two school districts. And so if we are going to, on the one hand, praise our Business Administrator, we probably should respect the recommendations that she is giving to us and the rationale in the budget that she has also given us, which I think is important. This money is not coming out of a teacher line. It is not coming out of something else. It is coming out of her specific budget office line. And we do not question these sorts of things, nor do I believe we should when we are hiring teachers to replace other teachers that... And, you know, we have a kindergarten teacher at Zane, I know this just because my kids go there, who has more experience than the outgoing teacher has. That means that that person is making more money. I don't think any of us would question that or vote no on it because that person has more experience and is going to bring more to the classroom as a result of it. And that is from everything that Ms. Coleman has said to us repeatedly, what this person, what she believes this person would do. So I appreciate everyone's comments. I wish that we could have them, be able to have those discussions without disparaging our Business Administrator and her recommendations in the process. And with that, do we have any more questions or comments from board members before we vote?
A point of clarification, real quick. Ms. Baiki is retiring and not resigning.
Well, I mean, this is the time for, you know, comments. So, you know, I think it is reasonable.
Right, right. So, okay. It just sounded like you were ending.
Well, yeah.
I think reasonable comments are important. I think ones where we're all sniping at each other or questioning the integrity of other people that work in our district is maybe not where this is appropriate.
Okay, sure. Well, first of all, I just wanted to double check. I don't remember speaking about this particular thing in the curriculum committee. I just wanted to make sure, like, did I miss something when we spoke before?
Was this in the update? This was in the update that I sent, or that was sent out?
Oh, like, over the email? Gotcha. But I did have a chance to, like, discuss, so, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
But I will, for a point of clarification, if any board member has questions during a committee meeting, that's about anything on the agenda, that's the time to bring it up. So if you had questions or concerns, the time to bring that up for a more extensive conversation is always during committee meetings, as we say.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. And I did reach out to the head of the Personnel Committee, as I should, right? Okay. So also, I did want to mention that, I mean, I don't feel like this is necessarily sniping. I think it's important to have a dialogue. We are required by law to have our meetings in public. So this is where we're having that meeting. Thanks to the, that was kind of reiterated at the Board Education Convention that we went to a couple of weeks ago. But I did want to mention, and, you know, again, I don't feel... I respect everything that Ms. Coleman does, absolutely. But I've also been present at a lot of budgetary meetings and I'm just concerned about expenditures. I appreciate that someone with higher qualifications, you know, demands a higher salary. I completely understand that. And I can't imagine, you know, how difficult it would be when Ms. Coleman does wind up retiring. So obviously, you know, future planning is very important. I just also am concerned with, you know, our overall budget. I am concerned, and also, I would assume that, for example, if we had teachers, you know, say, an opening for language, you know, according to the email that we got from CEA, you know, talking about language being eliminated at the eighth grade level, for example, due to budgetary concerns. If we had two Spanish teachers who were applying for the job, one is, you know, step 13 on the scale and another one is freshly out of college, I would assume in a time of budget crisis, it would be reasonable to hire the person who is not going to be demanding as high of a salary. That's all, I think that's a reasonable concern in this kind of situation. And after all of the different budgetary concerns that we've had and some of the eliminations of teaching positions and different programs, in light of the budget crisis, I think it is reasonable to have these concerns and to question them.
Can I, sorry, can I just clarify? Are you suggesting that because of the budget, teaching positions were eliminated? Is that what you just suggested?
Well, I'm not suggesting. I'm reading over the concerns that were said to us from CEA based on the concerns of, based on some of the presentation from last month. I'm just making comparison.
Yeah, I don't think that happened.
So the different budgetary constraints that occurred? Well, I'm just making, I'm just making a comparison.
Yeah, I think we should stick to facts, though.
So, all right, well, I would love the clarification then if CEA is not given the right facts.
Anything else?
Yeah, can I say just one more thing? I'm not by any stretch...
Be careful, please.
I'm sorry?
Just be careful about what you're going to speak about, please.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
God forbid it, I would do that. I'm not disparaging Mrs. Coleman by any stretch of the imagination. I think she does an excellent job and I think we're very happy to have her. So that's just the point that I'm trying to make there.
Understood. I just didn't want you to go into more information about the person that we're hiring. That's the part we can't talk about.
I would question how detailed our discussions were in the committee meetings.
Okay.
Oh, and there's a reason that the recommendations from the administration come to the board for a vote.
Yes, Mr. Seltzer, we know.
There's a reason that that's done and not that it's just an automatic from the administrator.
Absolutely, it's not. And we have discussed this extensively. Thank you. Roll call, please. Go ahead.
I'll, I'm just going to talk about my own, because I'm about to vote on this. So just from my own position, I will be voting for this position. And the reason why is that, the reasons given that I have heard in committees about why we need to have the accountant replaced by an Assistant Business Administrator at, you know, I think $20,000 extra cost, is that we have to plan for the future. And I think a lot of the concerns that I've heard from the community have been that, in, you know, is that the budgeting process that we've been using doesn't plan for the future and only addresses short-term needs. And this is one of those places where, from my understanding, Ms. Coleman has been able to find money within her office's budget to plan for the future. And because the Business Administrator position is so important for the well-running of the district, planning for the future where Ms. Coleman decides that it's her time to do something else, I think is a very important piece for us to consider when we're voting, you know, yea or nay for this position. That's my piece and, you know, looking forward to voting.
I'm going to ask for roll call now.
All right, Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes, except for 13.07 where I vote no.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes, except for 13.07 where I have to vote no.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes, except for item 13.07 where I vote no.
Sorry about that, Mrs. Severino.
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes, except item 13.07 where I vote no and any item with a double asterisk where abstain.
Mr. Dokus?
Yes, except where required to abstain.
There's a lot of feedback tonight, I'm sorry. Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Moving on to Section 14, the Culture, Climate and Policy Committee. Ms. Severino will present.
The Policy and Regulations Committee reviews all updates and changes of district policy and regulations, seeking approval of items 14.02 to 14.04. The following policies are up for a first read. 2270, religion in schools. 3212, attendance. 4212, attendance. They are for different staff members. 5116, education of homeless children and youths. And 8500, food services. 14.03, these policies are up for a second read. 144, board member orientation and training. 2520, instructional services. 5200, attendance. 7440, school district security. And item 14.04, the following policies have been abolished. 3432, sick leave. 4432, sick leave, again, for different staff levels. 5460.02, bridge year pilot program. 8540, school nutrition programs. And 8550, meal charges slash outstanding food service bill. Those two have been rolled up into 8550, the food services policy, which is up for a first read. So seeking approval of items 14.02 to 14.04.
Thank you. Motion to approve said items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Dokus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Section 15, miscellaneous. We have 15.01 is the recommendation to approve the HIB report from the October, from October 2023. And that is all. So motion to approve 15.01.
So moved.
And a second? Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mr. Dokus?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaden?
Yes. Section 16 is our final opportunity for public comment. This section is open to any comment that the public would like to make, excuse me. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. We will be actively listening and taking notes. And if further clarification is needed, we may make it at the end of public comment or at a future communication or meeting. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there is a strict three-minute time limit per person during public comment. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Beth Ann Rogers, 584 Washington Terrace, Vice President of the CEA. I just wanted to clarify, and first off, thank you very much for this open and honest conversation. I know, I appreciated it, my members did, as well as, I'm sure, most of the public did as well. We don't get to see the behind-the-scenes. And of course, we all appreciate your time and effort that go into this. We know it's a usually thankless job and we very much appreciate your energy, your enthusiasm, and that we truly believe all of you are doing what's right for our students and our community. We very much value the opportunity that you take in our input and listen. And one of the things that was mentioned, I can see why people might question.